We left off last week because they'd be all testimony for Mr. Williams to rebuttal testimony and to hear any new evidence. Try it. I'm sorry.
Where we left off last week was that we had concluded all the public participation. I don't know if Mr. Williams wanted to cross-examine anybody or add any bun remnants, some of the statements that were made. So I'm going to go for Mr. Williams and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Webster, and thank you, members of the board, for coming out again tonight. I know that you had me last night, and you have tonight, and maybe even tomorrow. So I know this is transferred on you, so I'll try to be very brief. I do not have any additional witnesses to bring forth. I want to thank everybody, both for and against the application, for coming out and voicing their opinion. That is a democratic process. That's what this system is all about. So I would like to make a couple of comments. As you'll recall, at our rest meeting, we presented the testimony of our architect, Rick Casselli, Eric Sullen, the general manager, and my executive chef, as well as David Walsh. We had tried to impress upon you that this expansion of Taj Mu is an expansion as a restaurant. We clearly just went over the floor plan, the type of food we anticipate providing to the public, and we were hoping that you would agree with that. Quite frankly, some of the comments that were made, both from the board and from the public, actually tend to doubt that this is actually a restaurant. I can assure you it meets every legal requirement to be a restaurant, both in the building codes, the construction code, the American Disabilities Act, as well as the reason you're here tonight, Title 33 under the Jersey statutes and Title 13 of the New Jersey Administrative Code. You're sitting here tonight as an ABC board. We are definitely a restaurant. I want you to keep in mind that you sit here tonight basically as a conscience of your community. There's over nineteen thousand people in Marstown. By my count, thirteen or fourteen opposed the application last week. Thirteen or fourteen spoke in favor. There are voluminous letters of support in favor. There were considerably less against, but there was active participation. I even went on the Internet. There's an informal vote. I don't know whether anybody saw that, whether or not this should be approved, or whether or not it should be denied. But I believe that you represent much more than us here tonight. You represent what's good for Marstown, and I submit to you that this is good for Marstown. The objections are basically about present conditions that people have experienced in Marstown. But how many times one person got up and said there were twenty-five-hundred bar seats in the general area? Well, it wouldn't surprise me that on any given night, one or two people acted appropriately. But that's not the majority of people that come out and drink with this community. That's not your reputation. I do ABC work all over the state. Nobody has the opinion that Marstown is a place where people do the things that people have obliged to have been done, because it's minute. It's an insignificant amount of people. I saw comments in the various letters about St. Patrick's Day. You have a reputation of having the best St. Patrick's Day in North Jersey. Your police department does an excellent job. Do a couple of people get out of hand? Of course, that happens all over. Take a look at yourselves, politicians, elected officials. You pick up the paper every day. Elected officials are getting indicted. Does that mean they're all bad, and nobody should ever get elected again? We should go to some other form of government? No, absolutely not. You have to give Mr. Walsh the opportunity to continue what he has done. This place has been there since 2006. He's personally run it since 2008. There have been no problems. You should vote in favor of this application, because there is no real opposition to it. No one from any municipal agency has opposed his application. There's no opposition from fire, health, building, or your police department. There's no opposition from your parking authority. This property is owned for what we want to do. However, we listen to what your comments were and the comments that came from the audience. You're really not a restaurant. Well, to prove to you that we are a restaurant, we are willing to accept a condition that we will stop the sale of alcoholic beverages at 12:30. We will keep the existing tenement restaurant the way it is, but the expansion will stop the sale of alcoholic beverages at 12:30. No one in this community has ever come before you and done that. The other restaurants that we will have to compete against can stay open to 2:00. Whether they do or not, it's their option. If one of them were to sell tomorrow, they could stay open to 2:00. But there are certain things that we can't do. We can't agree to allow you to give us a recipe for failure, and that would be earlier closing hour. And there are several reasons for that. One, people aren't going to come after 11:00 if we can't serve alcohol. Two, we have to compete with the people that are already serving alcohol well beyond that and have the option to go to 2:00. And three, something that you probably haven't considered, although Mr. Walsh's family owns the property, they still have to build this very expensive restaurant. The roof alone is estimated to be $250,000. What lending institution is going to loan money on this building if it's tampered with restrictions that show you can't succeed? To invest over $3 million in this restaurant, we have to have at least the opportunity to succeed. Now, if what seems to be the consensus, I refer to it gently as the opposition, that the problems are only going to be exacerbated in the area, and they're attributed to this applicant, you can deal with it. But please, don't punish him for something that may or may not exist now, when he's complying with all the rules and regulations. He's been a good member of your community. Allow him to go forward, and allow him to serve alcohol till 12:30, and grant the application with that special condition. So again, I thank you for being here. I hope that proposal by the applicant rests everybody's fears that this is going to be a bar. Thank you.
I just want, before we proceed delivery, I received an email from our clerk on April 3rd. It was a letter from Bill Bronchweger, and I received a response from Mr. Williams objecting to it. It was a letter that was forwarded to the Council people sitting at the ABC board, headed to address garbage, traffic, and alcohol-fueled mayhem. Mr. Williams immediately objected to it on the argument that he did not have the opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Bronchweger, and I agreed with Mr. Williams. The public portion for common was closed, and I want to address the board and ask them not to take Mr. Bronchweger's letter into consideration in their declarations here tonight. Counsel President, I guess you're up for deliberation.
All right, you start with me, Steve.
Mr. Williams, thank you for your closing comments and your outfits this evening. I appreciate it, and I myself would just like to clarify a couple of things that were stated at the hearing that I think were stated erroneously. One had to do, and I think I asked for clarification, of this board and the clerk and the town on the hours, because there seemed to be some discrepancy as to what the actual law is in town and what the hours are. So I'd like, at some point, for us to clarify that. The other thing I would like to clarify is some points that were made by members of the public, and I also want to thank all the members of the public for coming out on a second time to participate in this democratic process. First, regarding what you just said, Mr. Williams, I appreciate that you see that we are acting as ABC board, but we are also, some of us that sit up here, accountable to neighborhoods and wards and voters. So we have a balancing act to do in this role. It's not an easy role, and we've deliberated twice in the last year, once with Footballandia and once with the Grand Cantina, where we outlined a lot of conditions. So we've already done some thinking here as an ABC board, and I feel have developed some intellectual capital and thought capital into the process. But I just want to make very clear, when you say that we are objecting to the current conditions, those are the conditions that exist in our town. So to me, that's a very viable and legitimate parameter to be reacting to. For example, the length and the street width of DeHart Street. It's a narrow street. It was built many years ago. It's the nature, inherent nature of that street. We can't change the street. There's a redevelopment zone across the street. We can't change that. So there's some, in a way, it's a bit of a moving target in a way. These are inherent conditions that exist that we have to respond to, and hopefully we will try to deliberate and come up with a reasonable solution. I'm not opposed to business. I like the menu. I think there's some good ideas here, but I think there's some inherent conditions that we have to react to. So having said that, I just want to quote two members of the public who, of the thirty or so that spoke, stuck in my mind, and maybe as we deliberate this evening, we can incorporate their comments. And I also want to point the council to the resolutions that we already passed, because there were some really good ideas here, really good ideas, and to be fair with the process, I think we have to keep that in mind. Lastly, I do want to thank you for your willingness to close at 12:30. That will respect some of the noise issues. I think there's concern about the retractable roof and how noisy it is or will be. You know, we won't know that until we actually have to hear that for the first time. So there's going to have to be some give and take there. In closing, I just want to reference a comment that was made by a gentleman, and I apologize if I'm not getting the names right, Eldon Priestley, who really, you know, stuck with me when he said, you know, you're putting the cart before the horse. You, you know, it's important to relieve the taxpayers of burdens. You know, the taxpayers shouldn't have to bear the burden of the public safety costs. And, you know, he talked a bit about, you know, I think he talked about a moratorium. But I think with conditions that are consistent to what we've just discussed before, that's an effective way to try to control the issue. But I think that, I think that those comments were valid for me. And then when Christine Conti-Collins spoke about how we need to be fair, he happened to be opposed to it, but when Christine Conti-Collins spoke and she was for it, you know, her words stuck with me, because she urged us to be consistent as a governing body or as the ABC board. She talked about the importance of consistency. But I do want to, I want to clarify one thing that she said, was that this governing body did approve Footballandia. It was the redevelopment agreement that was found to be, it was found to be inconsistent with the redevelopment agreement, I was informed. But this governing body did approve that, so that was in favor of a previous Walsh application. I just want to make that clear. So, you know, I'm in favor of this with conditions that are consistent with the same logic and approach that we've taken in the past, and I'd be willing to, you know, deliberate and discuss all the conditions, namely, you know, police officer between 1:00 and 2:30, a security officer based on occupancy, the 12:30 close, and things of those nature. Thank you.
Can you be more specific? You just can't say that nature.
Okay.
Because what I'm doing is taking a list of what you're saying.
Okay. I'm referring to Resolution 79A12, which was with Footballandia.
You said hours would be 12:30 for the expansion to be closed?
I'm going to re-read strictly per word. Number three, the applicant agrees to hire one security officer for every fifteen people within the premises on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and any night during which there will be any special attractions or major sporting events. Four, the applicant agrees to hire one off-duty police officer to stand outside of the premises on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday between hours of 1:00 a.m. and 2:30 a.m. Five, the applicant shall ensure that no patrons shall congregate, possess, or consume alcoholic beverages at any time on the premises outside the confines of the building. Six, the applicant agrees that all doors shall remain shut at all times, except those doors temporarily open. That would apply to the retractable. Seven, the applicant shall arrange for cleanup of any litter, trash, beer, or other alcoholic beverage containers or debris from the area, and that goes on by 7:00 a.m. of the next morning. And lastly, the applicant agrees that pursuant to the Marstown code, at no time will more than thirty percent of the floor area be devoted to entertainment. These are just some initial thoughts.
I was just wondering if she's suggesting that they close at 12:30.
We can't hear that here.
Sorry. I was just, I was asking Councilwoman if she's suggesting that they close at 12:30, because there was some security suggested after 12:30.
Right. So, well, that's a good point. The one resolution says the applicant agrees that no alcohol should be served after 11:00. And then this other resolution says, was the one I just quoted, so there is an inconsistency here in the two resolutions as to when alcohol was served.
So what is your suggestion? Is it yours, because everybody else has a different?
Yeah, I, at this point, I don't know. That's, thank you for pointing that out. I would say...
Is there a given suggestion of...
Was the question with Footballandia, was that there was no alcohol served there?
There was alcohol.
Oh, okay.
It was a different...
They were sports oriented versus what this is.
I believe there were no other bars in the immediate vicinity with large populations of drinkers.
So they're suggesting 12:30? You could say they...
How about I just leave it somewhere between 11:00 and 12:30? Last week, I said to close at 11:00, so that would be consistent with my thinking. I don't know.
Just so that we don't confuse everybody, my representation to the board was that we were compromising at a 12:30 termination of alcohol service. We weren't anticipating closing the premises. That would be unrealistic.
So you say alcohol served?
We would stop serving alcohol at 12:30. Obviously, we'd have last call sometime before that, but we would allow people to finish their drink and leave. And one thing we have to keep in mind, we designed this project to have doors open. So we have a courtyard, and then we have entrance and doors, as Mr. Casselli had described, that would be open. But based on the operation, people dining with no bands or no loud music, we don't think that that's going to be a problem. Obviously, if it is, we're not exempt from the New Jersey Noise Act. We have to comply with the retractable roof. We have to comply with the noise ordinance. If it's too noisy because of the doors being open and inside, they'll have to close it. But I didn't want you to, you made a statement that we would close all the doors. If we do that, it takes the whole audience away from the design of this facility, this courtyard effect.
I think, yeah, I was reading straight from a previous, in the intent to try to be consistent. I was reading straightforward from this.
No, I think...
I think the thinking there is more, I was thinking more along the lines of the front of the building facing DeHart Street, because I think that was the thinking there with this one, was...
In front of this building, counsel?
In front of this building.
Has a courtyard, and would open alcohol.
So maybe that clause doesn't provide. Sorry about that.
The one about the dance floor, obviously, is a given. We represented, we wouldn't have a dance floor.
Well, you did talk about some entertainments.
Yeah, but let's tell, that's fine. Thirty percent is fine. You have no issue.
I mean, obviously, it's the council president's or it's the ABC chair, it's her requirement. But I think it might be helpful, we get every, all the ideas on the table, and see if there's an area of consensus.
Does he want me to respond to the other question regarding hours of operation?
No, let us just go from person to person.
We'll give, I'll let you talk. Not going to let you talk.
But I think, wouldn't that help the development of the deliberations? I did say I was going to, I had written down closing hours of bars, Sebastian's, Grand Cafe, Bourbon Table, Roots, Roz, and the Iron Bar. Excuse me, closing nights of those establishments, and then the actual closings of bars, David Todd's, Sonna, Taj Mu, and the Iron Bar. So, I'm sorry, at first I...
So, just with your recommendation, what time do you want the bar closed or the restaurant?
Well, I had asked for clarification of what the law required of all these establishments, and I didn't get...
I don't know if it's a requirement that the law allows. The law permits them to be open until 2:00.
All of these places till 2:00? Okay. So then, what was referenced at the hearing, were that certain places stay open till 2:00 and other places stay open till 2:00?
I think that, that's probably, that's the prerogative of the business owner. So some businesses find that, you know, their business model does require them to be open till 2:00. Many of the restaurants we looked at, I guess at the last meeting, and I wouldn't verify, I'm not opining against the veracity of those times, because sitting here, I heard probably three or four times for each, in each restaurant, so I don't actually know what time they close, but...
So I guess my thinking is...
But they can stay open till 2:00.
If the first set was more hovering around 11:00, 12:00, and the second set was more hovering around 2:00 a.m., I'd be more along the lines of the 11:00, 12:00 time frame.
All right, Ms. Smith, read.
So, my question is, the 12:30 that you mentioned, is that 12:30 Monday through Sunday you're considering?
Yeah, we would like the opportunity to stay open until 12:30, stay open for the sale of alcohol. But realistically, that may not happen during the week. It may close earlier, just like other restaurants, they can stay open to 2:00. They elect to close at 31:00, that's their option based on volume. So I'm not saying that we would do it every night, but we'd like the option to stop service at 12:30.
Would they consider Monday through Thursday, maybe closing at 11:00?
It's not closing, stopping, is it?
I mean, stop serving, I'm sorry, I got that in my mind. Unfortunately, but I got that in my mind. But I do know what you are recommending, no alcohol after 11:00.
That's what I was saying.
That's what I was saying.
What are you saying?
He's saying that, so council would be recommending between 11:00 and 12:30, they stop serving alcohol. They're saying at 12:30, they're consenting to stop selling alcohol, but that would not necessarily mean the place closes at 12:30. It may stay open until 12:31. I mean, it's maybe 12:30, it may stay open until 1:00, 1:30. If you have a drink in your hand at 12:25, Mr. Walsh is not kicking you out at 12:30. You're still going to finish your drink, you finish your conversation, and finish your chicken. You know, you're going to hang out there until you're finished. So he's not closing at 12:30. He's not going to sell you anymore alcohol at 12:30.
Okay, got it. Okay, serving the alcohol until 12:30, but what I'm getting at is...
Weaknesses.
Yeah, at the end of the weekend.
Do you have a...
Would you consider not serving the alcohol until 11:00?
So what, let's try to do this, let's try to get all the recommendations out. Let's not try to make...
This is what I'm trying to...
Not only make arguments with them, I don't want to ask like, turn questions, you know, until we kind of develop a consensus. So your recommendation is to stop service, stop, shut, close the place at 11:00 during the week, Monday through Thursday? Is that, is that your recommendation?
Stop serving.
Stop serving alcohol or...
Stop serving alcohol.
Okay.
Monday through Thursday. Any other suggestions?
So it does, well, I also would be at 2:00. Quite sure.
Who else?
Roof, I, yes.
Okay.
So I'm not really convinced whether or not the roof is not going to, I mean, neighbors will not be able to hear the chatter of the noises, the low music, or anything like that. I'm not convinced about that. Would you possibly even consider going those hours, pulling the roof back?
Closing the roof?
Yeah, closing the roof.
Okay, we can't have conversation, asking you questions. It's you come up with what you suggest, and then we're all going to talk about it at the end, and come up with an idea. You will go speak with them?
No, we'll...
We're going to go with...
What I'm trying to do is that, every one of you is going to have a whole bunch of ideas, and so we'd like to get them all on the table, so that we can kind of have a discussion. And what I'm asking you guys to do is to try to get them to buy into what-offs, because there's a lot of conversation about what what-offs they're going to make. And so if you're making a recommendation that after a certain hour, the roof be closed, is that where you're going?
Yes, that's where I'm going.
So do you have a recommendation during the week, and do you have a recommendation on Fridays and Saturdays as your time of...
As the time of the not serving alcohol.
Okay, so confused. All right, your recommendation is Monday through Thursday, what time do you want the roof closed?
Monday through Thursday at 11:00.
Okay, roof closed at 11:00.
12:30.
Roof closed at 12:30, Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
So Sunday is the weekend?
Well, Sunday...
Sunday is the Monday. So Sunday through Thursday, roof closed at 11:00. And then Saturday, Friday and Saturday night, roof closed at 12:30. I'm asking...
Yeah. Say it one more time.
My understanding right now is we're saying on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, roof is closing at 11:00. On Friday and Saturday, roof is closing at 12:30. Is that your recommendation?
That's right.
What other recommendation do you have, counsel?
So my question for you then is seasonal?
No. Of course, they're not going to have it open, that's the...
I understand that some people do.
You're asking that question.
No, it's not a matter of rate, it could be the season, it could be next year.
Well, the idea is to, I'm not convinced that it's not going to create noise for the neighborhood. So that's the idea, and quite frankly, I feel that those neighbors or those folks that live in that community have a right to the peace of life. So that is, that's where I'm coming from here.
Any other suggestions?
All right, so just wanted to say, since we're talking about consistency, last year I supported the bowling alley bar, because I thought it was a great idea, and that it would add a, something to the talent of Marstown that we don't have. I don't feel the same way about this application, but I should reiterate, as the councilman, as the counselor said, that this is allowed by law, this is allowed by our master plan, it's allowed by our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does not distinguish between a restaurant and a bar. It does not distinguish between concentrations of restaurant bars in residential areas. I'm not happy about that, but that's what we have. I would recommend to the council and to the residents of town that we have a master plan reexamination, or a new master plan going on right now with meetings and hearings, and we're not getting into it, meetings coming up in April, and this is your opportunity to change these laws, if you want that. Those don't apply here. That being said, I think that there are some things, some problems with the application. I believe that some of these can be addressed by the town and some by the application. I did have a question for Mr. Williams. The Taj Mu property is not owned by the Walshes, it's leased, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the extended property, is that owned by the Walshes, or is that...
It's owned by an LLC, which is controlled by a member of the Walsh family, but not the applicant that's before you. We have a lease for both premises.
So if the lease were to be stopped, or whatever the right word is, what would happen, given that the site plan essentially covers the entire... what would happen, given that the, the, the site plan essentially covers the entire site of the access?
From an ABC perspective, anytime a licensee loses his lease, he essentially loses control of the property and is, by operation of law, becomes a pocket license. So if they were to lose the lease, the premises by operation of law would be de-licensed.
Okay. Uh, so I thought it goes with the issues. First one, parking, um, the, uh, you know, parking, many of the residents have problems with the parking, uh, the administration has suggested that they are working with the, the, the neighborhood, the historic district to make residential-only parking, I think that's a great idea, I think that will essentially push all the, all the, uh, entertainment patrons into the surrounding, um, lots and garages. We don't have a definitive statement from the parking authority whether or not there's enough space in the Dehart Street garage, however, as I've said multiple times previously, we're trying to make Morris Town a walkable community, so I don't think it's, it's advantageous to suggest that people can't walk from, you know, quarter mile to their favorite restaurant. I would encourage the, the council and the administration to strongly enforce the, the, the residential parking, um, uh, ordinance when it, when it, when it's passed, um, so that the residents won't have to live with the problems that they have. Second, onto the noise, um, I'm not actually a noise expert, and I have thirteen years of noise experience, mechanical noise, et cetera, et cetera, um, and I know that the applicant, if he makes it to the planning board, will be required to bring the specifications of the opening and closing of the retractable roof to the planning board to show that it is in accordance with the, the town's and the state's noise ordinance. I don't have a problem with that, I'm also, uh, one of the things I've been working on, uh, is the enforcement of the noise ordinance or the development of a noise ordinance which can be enforced more readily, and so I would caution the, the, the applicant that, um, before you spend a quarter million dollars on a, on a retractable roof, you evaluate other outdoor establishments of this size and caliber, um, and, uh, because it would be a shame if, if the enforcement of the noise ordinance requires you to keep your retractable roof closed. In terms of the problems which are, I think, documented in this area, there are problems with, uh, collection of, or the storage of recycling and waste, um, above and beyond what, uh, Mr. Branshawder, Frager, uh, suggested, um.
We've instructed you to.
Yes, yes, and I had disregarded it, and essentially it's based on previous applications and the complaints by the residents, um, that this is a problem, and, uh, I refer to the extension of the, the, uh, the office bar where the administration worked with the applicant, and they volunteered to, uh, put the storage of garbage and recycling into an enclosed-in area, and that seemed to, um, help the, at least, allow the residents to, and the businesses to support the application. I think that would be a great, um, condition if the council were to support this application.
Is it all enclosed?
Any, any closed, uh, space for, uh, you know, similar to, to, uh, basically so that, so that the smells of lobster and other wonderful delicacies, uh, could not be smelled and the, and the placement of, of wine bottles, uh, and other such bottles could not be heard as they're deposited on a nightly basis.
Even inside the building?
Yes.
So, I would suggest that.
Or, or some shed or something, or some.
But essentially an enclosed, an entirely enclosed-in area.
Entirely enclosed.
So, so, um, you know, the garbage people, when they come, they come and they, and they, they open it up and they, and they pull it out, and that's how it works. I think that would be a benefit to the, to the, to the neighborhoods and to the businesses.
Can I ask something, can you mention something about, I, I'm just concerned about the hours, um, of garbage, garbage pickup, particularly with the bottles and the cans for the businesses because of, and where it's placed, of course. So I don't know if we handle that here, or if we handle that in the planning board.
Is that an issue for the partnership in terms of coordinating?
Cool, yeah.
But we're speaking about. Traditionally, the trash, just in trash, uh, collection and trash, uh, consumption location, part of the cycling application.
So it would be cycling, so we wouldn't do that at this point, but.
So these are, these, these, these recommendations are things that the applicant would have to accept, or they're not things that are mandatory, he does not have to accept them.
Right.
Uh, and as a result of him not accepting it, you can vote yes or no, uh, but these are things he has to voluntarily accept, so you can place the condition, if he accepts it, he accepts it, if he doesn't, he doesn't.
Well, council, your own planning board, so I'm asking you, are you going to voice that up here at that level?
Okay. So, uh, the other issue which is consistent with the, the, um, extension of the liquor license at the Mexican restaurant, the Cantina, um, they had request, uh, they had required, uh, they had, their applicant called for, I think it was twenty-four, uh, bar stools in, in, in an area of, of sixty person capacity, um, and we cut that in half. I support the applicant's, uh, idea of having private parties, um, on the first floor while also being able to provide, um, regular service to the other, other people. I think that three bars with twelve stools, twelve stools, and twenty-four stools is excessive and, um, would promote more of a rowdy, uh, atmosphere, so I would recommend as a condition, if the council were to approve it, uh, two, um, twelve-stool, say twenty-foot bars on the first floor, and the same as they proposed, a twelve-stool, twenty-foot bar on the second floor. Similarly, with the extension of the Cantina, um, we cut their hours to the sale of alcohol to eleven o'clock, um, that's my recommendation, that's what we did on the Cantina. I think that this is a serious problem with the, the expansion of, of alcohol-related activities late night, and I think this is the appropriate thing for the council to consider. The only other issue I have, and it's a planning board issue, uh, but I thought it was appropriate for the council to consider, uh, while the, while the, Mr. Williams said that the, the, the application is consistent with, with the zoning ordinance, uh, that is consistent, it's consistent, but with, with the use, with use elements, um, uh, item thirty-six oh five dash one, and if you would like a copy of that, um, here it is, uh, basically says that, uh, for all properties abutting or divided by a zone, district, boundary line, or of a more restrictive district, yard requirements, be it front side or rear, for the segment of such property facing the boundary line shall be that of the more restrictive district. Additionally, where the abutting property have a common sideline, the property in the less restrictive zone, so have a front, the front yard doesn't apply. Essentially, and I confirm this with the zoning ordinance, that the, that the property abuts the ORC zone on the side, which has a ten-foot side yard requirement, essentially, they will be required without a variance, um, to comply with the ten-foot sidewalk variance. Similarly, they are, um, the rear of the property abuts the RC zone, which is the garden department zone, which has a rear yard setback of thirty-five feet, so without a variance, they will be required to, um, comply with a thirty-five-foot rear yard setback. Their application calls for zero side and zero rear, I think this poses somewhat of a problem, considering, unless there are grants of these, these, these variances by the planning board, um, the application that is granted by the planning board will be different than the application that goes for us. Thinking about that, the only, the only, the only condition I, I would propose is that, uh, the elevation of the application cannot be substantially increased, and we'll let the planning board decide upon merits of, of the, of the application.
We, I'm not sure.
Sign of the building, height of the building.
The height of the building cannot, cannot increase. Setbacks will only make the footprint smaller, um, which would reduce the capacity of the place, um, and I see that as a benefit, uh, in terms of potential for, for, for businesses.
Can I go back to a little one thing you said, you said just two bars in the full establishment, one on the first floor?
Two bars on the first floor.
And then one on the second one?
One on the second one.
So there's three total.
Essentially, the elimination of the twenty-four foot, the twenty-four stool. Forty.
To the U-shaped bar.
You know, how, however they wanna configure it, that's to them.
So instead of a hundred feet of bar, how many is it?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Wait, wasn't it a hundred and twenty, twenty, so it's cutting.
Hundred, hundred and seven, as I recall.
Oh, was it? Oh, it was one twenty.
It's actually, it's actually, it's a, it's a one and a half foot bar, a red stool, that's a very good question.
Done.
I'm done.
So, um, I'm the youngest member on the board, if everyone can't tell, um, I, uh, probably have a little bit more, uh, experience being around the, um, the nightlife scene, I guess, late at night in town, um, maybe not, I don't know. I don't stay out as late as I used to, I think, when I first moved into Morris Town, um, as I've gotten older, but nevertheless, um, I do enjoy going out from time to time. One of the features of this town that I think has been a huge, um, selling point for young people moving in here, um, is the nightlife and is the restaurant scene. So, uh, I speak to a lot of, uh, people my age, obviously, quite often, so I probably hear a lot of, um, that side more than anyone else, I think. I understand my obligation as a member of the, uh, council here and as an elected official to represent everyone in town, so I, I certainly hear the, uh, you know, the ideas and, and issues that people bring up, uh, who live in the area. The, the ability to eat, uh, you know, a, a later meal, obviously, is something that personally, uh, I like, I work a full-time job, and generally, when I come here or to other meetings that involve the town, I'm coming straight from the train from New York City. My wife also works late hours as well, so during the week, there are a couple times where we'll eat at ten or after. I notice a lot of other people like me that do this, and understand others don't. I, I think, uh, in, in line with other businesses in the town, I guess, that, that the proposed applicant is comparing themselves to, which David Todd's, I think, was throwing out there, I guess Roots, um, I, I think they do, I believe they do stay open till, or they have the option of staying open till two o'clock, I know they obviously don't all the time, depends on how many people they have there, um, I, I think though, I don't know what the right time to, to close, I don't know if it's eleven thirty, twelve, twelve thirty, I think the, uh, offer from the applicant to close early is a fair one. So, I, I, you know, I'm not a sound expert, um, thank God we have Stefan, um, or even from a planning board perspective, um, with that much expertise, so I certainly, you know, welcome all of the other thoughts and ideas of my fellow council members, um, but it's just speaking from, you know, obviously, my own personal, um, experience in the town, and obviously, hearing a lot of people discuss this application as well as previous ones, uh, again, I think it's a, a fair offer. Retracting the roof at certain times, as, uh, was brought up, I think is something you can certainly look at, I don't know, again, if, if it's gonna be a huge noise issue for the people around there, um, but, um, yeah, I, I, again, I think it's, uh, I think it's, I don't know what the right time is, I'm sure we can deliberate on that, but I think it's a, a fair offer.
Just wanted to ask the councilman, is that, um, are you, we've had kind of a distinct, uh, kind of a bifurcated discussion between the time to stop serving alcohol and the time to close, they've offered to stop serving alcohol at twelve thirty to close as the patrons leave, um, are you, are you comfortable with that, just stop serving alcohol at twelve thirty, that's what I wanna kind of focus on?
Right, yeah, it's being the latest time to stop serving alcohol, uh, yeah, yes.
I really am appreciating this discussion, and you've given me a lot to think about, which is great. So we're in this stack, are the notes of what I was gonna say? Uh, I guess what I'm looking at in terms of consistency, which I really do appreciate, but also realizing that every situation is unique, and by that I mean, the number of bar stools in one corner of town is not the same as the number of bar stools in another corner of town, street width is not the same, proximity to residents is not the same, so it's not as simple as, you know, apples to apples, although that'd be nice if it was. What hasn't changed, though, is the conditions around this location, where, um, is this August fourteenth, uh, in resolution R one eleven twelve, we denied an application, and I did vote against it, for a bowling alley bar that was entirely enclosed, all noise would have been enclosed, with an occupancy of around two hundred people. So we have now been presented with an application for potentially three hundred people or more, and with a roof that opens, effectively creating one large outdoor, your garden, which sounds really cool and fun, but I think of the history of noise complaints from Jimmy Haunt, from Calhoun when it was open, I think of the fact that we deliberated and determined that any outdoor seating had to end at eleven PM, as soon as the weather got warm, I have residents asking me, what time do, uh, the restaurants have to take in their tables? It's eleven o'clock. So, the conditions in terms of the number of people out, the number who might be drunk at two in the morning, the cars going in and out of the garage on an hour-one-way street while people are spilling out into that street, all those conditions continue to exist. The noise created by hundreds, at least hundreds, if not thousands, of bottles being tossed into recycling early in the morning, two in the morning, is still a problem. So basically, all the reasons why we denied a two-hundred-person indoor facility with a bowling alley that everybody wanted, all those external conditions are the same, and the residents have spoken so clearly, the people who live nearest to this Friday have spoken so clearly to every condition, every one of the situations that were the grounds for our decision then. Since that time, we did say that the situation on Early Street was different, the proximity to residents was different, the number of bars and drinkers there was different, but when we were faced with an application facing South Street, which is a state highway, and that exited out potentially onto the Piazza, we said you have to close at eleven, you have to handle all your trash and recycling indoors, um, and really, no outdoor seating or noise whatsoever. I think the reason we said that is because this area has reached a saturation, it's already, it's already there, and we can't continue to add to it. We said no to two hundred people in an enclosed facility, for a list of reasons which I could enumerate if you feel that I need to, but in the interest of time, maybe I won't. I'll mention that that opening roof, having been at a Calhoun Club event for just women, I think there were about a hundred of us, and I don't even recall if alcohol was being served, which means that it might have been, um, the police came and shut us down because we were talking too loudly. A hundred women excitedly chatting creates a buzz like a pejive that you would not believe. So with this roof open, while your music may be directed down, and I respected that idea of music being directed downward, the sound of voices rise. So we will now have like the area's largest collection of potentially a hundred fifty women, or, and a hundred fifty men, just their talking alone is going to be really, really loud, and after eleven o'clock, I can't imagine that that would be acceptable in any residential neighborhood, and I'm pretty sure it'd be a violation of our ordinance, but who wants to go to the expense of enforcing it? Let's just avoid the situation. I think we were told that the delivery trucks would not increase in number or size, given fresh seafood and just the volume of beverages that would be consumed. I can't imagine that that would be true either. We already have lots of issues with loading and unloading on the street. Access to the rear of the building, where I think it was proposed that garbage would be picked up, is on the property of a building that I understand you don't own. And in that case, if Klavy Little Tashmoo were to lose its seat in the world, and you just have a larger establishment, I don't understand how a truck would get to the back to pick up the trash and recycling, even if it were entirely enclosed in an indoor room. The establishment as proposed, it bears no resemblance to the small, quiet Tashmoo that exists and that people love. And as far as alluding to a survey on Pach dot com, where anybody who has six email addresses can vote six times, I find that to be kind of insulting to the intelligence of an elected official who actually runs for real votes. I would love it if online sites were viable. They say it's not statistical or scientific. It really means less than nothing. So to that end, I don't support a roof that opens, because they've already got a front courtyard. I don't believe that alcohol should be served after eleven P M., which is the condition we opposed on the Cantina. I agree completely that the size of the bar should be greatly reduced. I'm sorry. I feel like everybody's tired and I should just... No roof opening. No alcohol after eleven. Just like the Cantina, which is really a restaurant. All trash and recycling dealt with indoors. And access to it assured regardless of the ownership of the existing licensee's property.
You do sports signs?
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely. Restaurants don't need a hundred feet of bar. That whole big, however many feet that is, and the fact that turns out off basically a standing-room-only bar area, to me, is not what a restaurant would have. But it sounds like if a thirty-five-foot rear yard is required, it would go away. So it sounds like a great restaurant, really, with all of those conditions. And I mean, there's lots of demand for restaurants in town.
Ms. Foster?
I'd like to thank all of the comments that have been made and all of the issues that have been addressed, and I appreciate all of the time that the applicant has put into expanding the restaurant. I do like the idea of a seafood restaurant. However, I'm still not sold on the fact that it's not going to turn into a bar. I think that when we spoke last week, there was a question about whether TVs in the front area, and I think it was posed that it may be one or two. That kind of sounds to me more like a sports bar or lounge kind of area. It doesn't really sound like a restaurant, although I like to believe that, you know, it's going to be a restaurant. So I can't really contest whether it is, whether it's not being that, it's not really defined. But I don't really support the retractable roof. I think that it really poses a huge quality of life issue for the residents that are in that surrounding area. I don't really think that it's fair that they have to be only in late night because of the noise issue. And granted that we don't have or we've never seen it, or, you know, none of us have been around to experience a retractable roof, I think it's kind of not fair to grant the applicant a retractable roof. Even though you want to meet the sound requirements, I understand that, but noise is a big issue. I agree with some of the council members that said, you know, it's a narrow road, so adding a population of two hundred plus more people in a narrow area where you have a collapsed building, it's going to flood people, you have the complex or the luxury apartments around the corner and then behind. I just don't think that the number of people is going to help the situation. I don't support the four bars. I think that that is an excessive amount of bars for a restaurant. If it's going to be a restaurant, I think that it should be closed as a restaurant. Four bars, two upstairs or two downstairs, however it's going to be situated, I don't really support that. And I also don't support the closing at twelve-thirty. I think that when you talk about being fair, and that was one of the issues in common, a lot of the comments from the public. I wasn't around for Footballlandia, so I can't speak to that. But I did support Grant Cantina with the condition that it closed at, that they stopped serving alcohol at eleven o'clock. So I think it would, and we asked the applicant to reduce the number of bar stools. So I don't think that it would be fair to support that you serve alcohol until twelve-thirty, and then you can have the same number of bar stools. So I wouldn't be able to support the application that way. I do think that we all have an obligation, not only as the county members in to speak at this A B C hearing, we have to take into consideration the quality of life around, not just for the residents, but for the other business owners too. I do think that businesses should be able to expand, and I think that you should be able to grow your business. But I think to a certain extent where it's not going to overpopulate, congest the area, and create more problems that are already there for steam that we haven't even been able to address or put to an end. So I like the idea of a seafood restaurant, and I think that the applicant should be entitled to expand. I mean, who would want to come down and have seafood? But I don't think alcohol should have to be served after eleven o'clock. I also would support the retractable step-to-step area that Councilwoman Armington had suggested, because there is an issue with the seafood and the smell of the seafood and the trash. And I just think that it's fair that we be fair to the applicant. So not to just not consider the expansion, but to take everybody's ideas and everybody's input and try to come up with a fair solution so that the applicant can expand and finish the application.
So last but not least, I'm on the other end of that age group. And I know I already currently have issues with my neighbors and a group of young men in their twenties, and they like to party at the weekend, and they have a van. And I'm always knocking on the door, trying to turn it down. I'll leave you a note saying when I'm not there, so you can play, but, you know, there's always an issue with the drinking and things. So I know the quality of life concerns for the older residents and even some of the younger ones who have families. I did approve the other two applications with all the other conditions. And after listening to all the comments of my council members and also the residents in the community, I do feel that they should have a right to have this restaurant, but my conditions would be, and listening to some of the comments and kind of figuring out what it would be like. Hours of operation would close down for the last call, with the eleven-thirty for drinks, twelve o'clock stopping, serving. Eleven P M., the outdoor seating, we know that that's a regulation already, that that will be taken care of. The operation of a roof. At first, I was playing with what the suggestion of Ms. Ms. Reed was saying.
You're saying outside seating, you mean the...
The courtyard.
Courtyard?
Yes. Operation of the roof, I was thinking of Sunday through Thursday, nine o'clock, and Friday and Saturday at the same hours. So that way, he will, at least would be able to get to sleep at a decent hour. He wouldn't be so noisy, and I know that the regulations that, I know that Mr. Armington will be working on along with approval of the board, that that would suffice.
What are your, what are your Saturday, Saturday and Sunday operations?
Well, every day, nine o'clock.
Friday and seven, Friday and...
Every day.
Every day.
Every day, nine o'clock. I agree also with the trash being enclosed, recyclables and regular trash, along with the...
Enclosed in the building?
Enclosed in the building. We know that Iron Bar has done that. When it comes to cleanup, I know that Ms. Dean mentioned number seven. The applicant shall arrange for cleanup of any litter, trash, beer, or the alcoholic beverages, containers, and debris in that area. And up to seven A M. up doing, making sure that everything's cleaned up for that next morning. So I'd like to see that condition. Delivery, I know that we're still having issues with that, and I know the Planning Board can work with that. Also with the Parking Authority of coming together with some regulations for the whole business district about their hours of operation, of when they're delivering, when they're picking up trash. And so that's something that I think that we can work with them on, to put that in place, because that is a congested area with a narrow street. And the other one would be agreement of reducing of the bar size to three bars and the number of bar stools. And everything else, son?
I just wanted to make a point, what you said about the outdoor seating. This is not considered the courtyard area, it's not considered sidewalk cafe, so that eleven P M. restriction of the sidewalk cafe.
So what would be the restriction?
There wouldn't, there wouldn't be one unless you put a restriction on it. She was suggesting eleven P M., but the way she said it, she made it sound as though... So it would be the same as a sidewalk cafe limitation of eleven, but that allows a hot restriction which automatically applies to courtyard, this sidewalk cafe.
So you're saying eleven-thirty is for the sale of alcohol?
Eleven-thirty, eleven-thirty is last call, twelve o'clock, please stop.